Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions and deletions to tonight's meeting? None? Is there a motion to approve the May 22nd, 2023 council meeting minutes?
I move that we approve the May 22nd, 2023 council minutes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by nay? Motion carries. Reports, Councilman Moulton?
Oh, not much. I think our last year, today's meeting is Thursday here, six at Town Hall. That's about it.
Okay.
And I was gonna ask the attorney of the MLU for the golf course.
He's working on it. We've discussed that probably forty-five days ago or so. Was hoping he would have it done soon, but I've since he's not here this evening, I will give him a call in the morning. Okay? Councilwoman Nunn?
Yes, thank you. Memorial Day was celebrated with dignity and respect for our veterans and most especially for those who left our community to serve in the military and never returned. It was beautiful to see the flags hanging downtown. Thanks to the town for making the facility available to place the flags and thanks to the Legion crew who got the flags safely up and back down again. On Memorial Day ceremony, the cemetery had an open house for the public to view their new facility for holding meetings and for conducting their business. Thanks to our sexton Scott Gilbert for all the work he and his crew did to create and build this space for the use and convenience of the people of Glen Rock. As a conclusion to this part of my report, I would appreciate our fire chief Sean Lindsay sharing with the council the spatial information he shared at the Memorial Day.
One of our firefighters, Mr. Scott Howe, who's at Rolling Hill Station at the time, put a Glen Rock hat on the Flight 93 memorial and had his picture taken and gave it to the fire department. So, it's kinda nice. There's also a quilt and another hat hanging at the 9/11 memorial up there too that the gals made and is hanging in there too. So, if anybody wants to see it, I can pass it around or...
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for bringing it. That was very special. I think it's nice that you were there and that you got that taken care of for our town. Thank you. Attended the WHAM Summer Convention in Cody, a very beautiful and very clean city. The people of Cody should be very proud of what they offer to anyone driving through their city. I have always had respect for the work a clerk and a treasurer does. After attending all sessions of the mandatory financial training for elected public officials, I have even more respect for the work that our clerk and our treasurer do to stay in compliance with the many state laws and the many regulations. Thank you, Tammy and Kelly. Also during the conference, I attended the presentation by Doug Griffiths, author of the book Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. It's really an interesting book. There's a lot here that applies to Glen Rock, believe it or not.
There's a lot of it too, Margaret.
At this conference, Mr. Griffiths discussed his new community decide called Thirteen Pathways to Success, including, this is kind of interesting, his broken window theory, which is a reflection of a blighted community, yikes, and an emphasis on being unique. What makes Glen Rock unique that would draw people to our community to visit or to live? His total presentation had many interesting thoughts and suggestions. Mr. Mayor, no questions at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Kincaid?
Also attended the WHAM Summer Convention. Wonderful speakers there, as Margaret just brought up. That guy was excellent. Took away a lot of stuff that we can use in our community, I think, and improve. Very informative. It was an excellent time and of course, being in Cody was great too. It makes it all much better. Also, I completed all my mandatory trainings too, so.
Councilwoman Cummings?
My husband and I went to the Boys and Girls Club dinner and fundraiser a couple of weeks ago. Food was good, the speaker was entertaining, it had something to do with football, so I'm not sure, but it was interesting.
It was pretty good.
I had no idea. And I won a fishing trip. I also don't fish, I don't play football, I don't fish, but had a good time and the Boys and Girls Club raised over eighty-seven thousand dollars that night, which sounds pretty good to me. So, I was impressed with everybody and like I said, we had a good time. Have a message from the Converse County Commissioners that they will be funding the ambulance service for one full year to give us time to have an ad hoc committee get together and try to beat out a long-term solution, but it's nice to know we don't have till the end of the month, so. And that's about it.
Clerk Tammy?
Well, I also attended the convention in Cody and I always love going to WHAM to be reminded of all the things we're supposed to be doing. I just wanted to, I've sent out the liquor license renewal forms, those are due back to me on Friday. And then I think we are probably due for a work session. I don't know if you guys wanna set a date or...
If you have one this month, it would have to be next Monday.
Which is a federal holiday.
Well, that's a holiday.
And not that it matters, but...
All the big bucks we make, what difference does that make?
Right.
Right.
Or we'd have to wait till probably sometime the first part of, first Monday in July would be the third.
The Fourth of July holiday? That one, we're actually working on that Monday though, I think, so, the third.
So, if you wanna do the third or somebody pick a date.
I don't believe we're going anywhere, I don't know.
The third of July, I won't be here.
Okay, so we could do the third.
Does anybody have a problem with the nineteenth?
Of what? This month? I have no problem with either date.
It's a holiday.
That doesn't...
Yeah, but...
It works out for us.
Because we have it on.
June 13th.
That is news to me every year. I started it.
Now, see, if we hadn't have told you, if we hadn't told you, you'd show up for work that day.
I continuously do it.
I'm okay with the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, I'm fine.
I don't mind.
Five thirty, five o'clock?
Yep.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, five or five thirty, is it? How about, you wanna show up? Well, John, what works best for you, five or five thirty? For getting, well, you're off on Monday.
Okay, it didn't matter.
If you guys wanna meet right at five, it's fine with me. It doesn't make any difference.
Five's okay with me. Five o'clock.
Okay.
Monday, the nineteenth.
Monday, the nineteenth, yeah.
All I have.
Okay, moving on. Kelly, treasurer.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Don't have much, just attended WHAM and enjoyed it as usual and some good sessions and finished all the credentials for the state, which is nice. And sales tax came in last week and continues to come up a little bit, which is nice. And I did you the emails on the ordinances, so we should be good on that. That's it.
Public Works Randy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I did not attend WHAM. But the crew's been busy with meter and meter pit replacement, parks work, installing story walk posts. We got those done for the library, they're all installed down there. They haven't got their story walks up yet. Garbage collection locates and weed mowing, we're trying to get caught up on that with all this rain, mosquito spraying and street sweeping. I will be leaving Wednesday and I'll be back to work on the 26th and taking a short vacation, so. I will have my phone with me though.
But you're camping where there is no cell service, correct?
Not the first four days. Be in Cody. After that, I'll be in the Big Horns.
Lyle, building inspector?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thirty-four building permits to date, a lot of inspections going on, that's good. Shout out to the high school and middle school for their last day of school, they did a lot of cleaning, so they did a really good job. Randy and April picked up the trash, so that was another bonus for them. Post office coming up with their end of June, I don't think they're gonna do anything on their lot or their rail, so we'll probably have to force them to. Positive note, the sun shades for the town square, they got material in today, but not...
Not the bolts?
They don't know if they got it all or what material they got, so end of this week, they'll be starting to make shade, so.
Anything on the stainless steel bolts?
No problem as far as I've heard since the order, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay. Police chief?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Where are we at with Brian's special needs permit?
That's a good question. So, I kinda dropped the ball on that, I thought that...
But that was several weeks ago, how we move forward since then on that, or what?
Well, at your next meeting, we'll finish it. And I talked to Brian and Brian was kinda okay with it being delayed 'cause...
Yeah, he's got...
Of his eyes, so he's got the one-year date, so he was kinda happy with that, so. That's a good thing, but yeah, so next meeting.
All right, cool.
Moving on to the police chief, Coulter.
Would you skip if you want?
No, go ahead.
Last chance, go on, so. Been a busy few weeks, hard to believe it's been that long since we had a council meeting. I'm sure I'm forgetting a few things, but currently working a couple of kinda time-consuming investigations, been spending some late nights and early mornings trying to get that stuff taken care of. Should have our new vehicles within the next three weeks, both of them should be here. Assuming my graphics are ready to go on the sides, we should hopefully have them on the street within the next month is the plan, but things are moving along and that's super exciting, so. Command truck that the fire department and the police department purchased together, was able to get down and take a look at that with Jared and Chief Lindsay. Pretty excited about that, that's a really cool piece of equipment, so hopefully you guys will find some time, come take a look at that one of these days. But we are looking for what we need to do to get radio equipment inside of it and get that ordered and play that game all over again, I guess, waiting for things to get delivered. I was awarded a WASCOP scholarship for twenty-five hundred dollars to attend the IACP conference in October, kind of a pretty cool deal, so I'm looking at being able to attend that. It's a six-day conference, it's in San Diego actually this year, so, but that is with chiefs from all over the country, so a lot of really good knowledge there to be found and so I'd like to be able to attend that if I can make it work with schedule, so. Lastly, movie night at the square, attended that on Thursday with my family, so really neat, very big success, so big thanks to Jared, who was down there and took care of that, got it all set up and everything ran real smooth, so.
Along those lines, a shout out to the Lions Club, they did their burgers.
Yeah.
They're really good.
Didn't need to get one of those, but that's all I've got, unless anybody's got...
Chief Felder, where is the command truck?
At the fire department.
At the fire department, you can go look at it there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you get ahold of me, I'll be happy to go down there with you and show you anything or...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jared, IT?
Yeah, evening, Mayor and Council, lots and lots of projects. We've been, we got some additional cameras up at the square, we got cameras up at the Town Hall in Rolling Hills, we got an access point added over at the town square, we, the Flex server got upgraded last week to the latest version, we get everybody's multi-factor enabled and we're getting everybody slowly all logged back into that, yeah, and just kinda ongoing projects here in the summer while we've got the good weather.
Jared, you have a really neat screen in your office, are all of our town offices going to be able to get a screen like that that's got the four things on it?
Well, if they want that much chaos on their desk, they're welcome to it, I'm happy to budget and get them one of those, but most of them have been pretty happy with two so far, so.
Which is really impressive looking to them.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, come on, Kelly.
Sean, do you have a, if you're done, fire department, anything else for us this evening, Sean?
Well, it's been pretty busy down there. As Coulter mentioned, we do have the new communications truck down there, so if you do wanna stop by, just give me a shout and take a look at it, it'll be beneficial for the town and the whole county. Also, we have purchased a squad truck, which is a light rescue truck that will, you will see running along with the ambulance and stuff soon as we get it equipped and ready to rock and roll. We have the purple and white truck, it's almost equipped and ready to go soon as we get the radio programmed and some more equipment swapped around. We'll also be getting rid of five pieces of equipment, says we're out of room. The trucks are getting bigger, not smaller. I don't know what to do about that, 'cause when you go down and talk to them, they just, this is what you get. But we also have eight guys, nine guys involved in a EMR class, which is an emergency medical responder class, they're doing that and we have a lot of guys also finishing up their firefighter ones, so they're pretty busy attending classes at this time, so. As everybody knows with the ambulance, we're not here to take their place, but we're also there to help them out and if we happen to beat them there, at least the guys will be able to do what they need to do and have the equipment to do it, so. Other than that, it's just been a busy, busy time, so. We also have the Fourth of July coming up, which is gonna be another busy time, we hope the rain holds out until after the fourth, 'cause the grass is gonna be taller than me and I'll be lost in it, so. But that's about all I've got to report unless you have any questions.
So, if you're getting rid of five pieces of equipment, that means that the fire departments have a real fire sale?
We'll have plenty of equipment.
Sell them, give them, what's to do with them?
We're getting rid of a piece of equipment that we have been running on the ambulance calls, 'cause obviously we have the new rig coming. Since we have the new pumper, we have a XS pumper now, so we'll need to get rid of it, 'cause we have no...
You sell them? Can you sell them to people?
Well, they'll actually go to an auction place, it's called Purple Wave, and having the best success was getting the best price out of that particular organization.
Interesting.
And we also, when the two five tons, we'll have two two-and-a-half tons to get rid of too, because like I said, we're just out of room, so. And the five tons will be more used than the two-and-a-half tons, because they'll have twelve-hundred gallons of water on them and the spray bars and everything, so no sense hanging on to this other equipment. Then we have an old maintenance truck that was around when Bruce was a young guy, we're gonna get rid of it.
Better that they're asking to sell five when they buy one than buy the rest of the half of the block.
They had trucks when you were young?
That way we can recuperate a lot.
Couple harsh drawn. Haven't you seen the old rail one that's out there in the parking lot?
So, Rolling Hills doesn't need any of this kind of equipment?
Rolling Hills will actually inherit the county pumper that's down here in town up there, 'cause we'll be getting rid of that pumper we put up there.
And what about like some of the fire districts out in the forests around here? Do any of them need any of that kind of equipment up in the mountains?
Well, like I said, Rolling Hills is very well-equipped, so they have pretty much what we have downtown, so.
Canic fire, their trucks at all time, they're adding additional fire buildings to house them in, so they can keep them ready to go year-round, 'cause they have heat instead of having to winterize them.
Yeah, 'cause probably here in the near future, while I talk to you guys about maybe adding on to the fire hall a little bit, so we can store that nice communication truck, so it's not sitting outside.
Come, I knew that was coming.
Coulter won't like it if it sits outside too long.
Okay, nobody has any cause for Sean, it's, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
I believe we're done with reports, so we would move on to items from the floor. Is there any items from the floor this evening?
Hello, my name is Paula Flynn. I'm a longtime resident of Glen Rock and I have a small business in my home called Way Out West Music Academy. I am here representing myself as well as the Casper Music Teachers Association. First off, we wanna say thank you. Thank you for that little town square and that massive LED screen, because on June 3rd, we were able to raise over a thousand dollars, and it's kinda funny, I'll tell you the story in a minute, but... I'm getting out of order. Six studios, myself from Glen Rock and five from Casper, featured twenty-six students, three teachers, and seventy-one scenes in three silent film shorts, two Buster Keaton shorts and one Charlie Chaplin short, and we raised, like I said, just north of a thousand dollars. Now, what was really amazing about this is our president Cindy Rogers said that if Glen Rock supported our fundraiser and we were able to raise a thousand dollars, we were gonna use the Glen Rock Town logo in all of our advertising for what we were matching grant funds with this fundraiser. And I'm looking out there and I'm looking at the students and I'm thinking, these are mostly Casper parents and Casper students. I think six of my students were up there and then the rest were Casper students, but hey, Casper supported in a big way. And because we did raise the thousand-dollar landmark that we set, we would like to seek permission to use the town logo. What we will be using this for is any of our advertising and marketing as we are bringing Barry Green, the author of The Inner Game of Music, into Casper College on January 27th of 2024. This will be a conference, a one-day conference that is open to Casper College students, private independent teachers, music teacher students, as well as public school students. What he focuses on is shutting off the inner voice. When you're in performance mode, you have that little judgment voice that can really derail a performance and he takes us through exercises on how to do that and we see that as a benefit for our students. So, our fundraiser at the Silent Film Fest was in part matching grant funds for some grants that we already have raised and earned, so we are seeking permission today to use your town logo in our advertising, since largely this would not have been possible without that beautiful LED screen and that fantastic town square.
Paula, interesting comment here, this thing about thirteen ways or thirteen pathways to success, one of the things that was mentioned is the need to work across communities and you're already doing it, good for you.
Well, thank you. We're working across communities because Casper Music Teachers Association allows me to participate in their organization, since I am the only independent teacher registered with MTNA, a national organization, but if we had done the fundraiser at the David Street Station in Casper, and I do not wish to speak ill of Casper, but we would have lost money on this venture, from renting their arena to what money we raised, if the numbers had remained the same, which they wouldn't, but if the numbers had remained the same, we would have lost money because of having to rent the facility. So, the fact that you have made this available to us and Jared deserves a raise, because he was absolutely stellar for months. He and I would have little powwows after church and it was like, I need this, oh, cool, can you do this? Yeah, I got that, give me a poster, okay. And he was instrumental in making it run smoothly and beautifully, so thank you very much.
Paula, can you have another one of these silent film festivals in the fall and maybe grab this event as something that is traditionally held in Glen Rock and maybe Douglas could join us?
This is our second annual, well, this is our third annual in Glen Rock. The first one happened in 2021, when the world was still largely shut down, and it happened in my backyard with a Sam's Club blow-up screen and a projector and it was really late at night with the mosquitoes, but we made it work. I had started it as a camp and then I opened it up to the Casper Music Teachers Association and they jumped on it and last year, we had hoped that the LED would be installed by the first summer weekend and it wasn't, but we punted and we made it work out and we played in an absolute deluge on two honky-tonk pianos. I was a drowned rat and playing Maple Leaf Rag with water splashing up in my face and having the best time I've ever had in a performance. But it's already an annual event. To answer your question as to whether we could do this in the fall, no. The reason is, this particular event is a culmination of the entire year's worth of study for the students. Most of them take the summer off and they become a little rusty in the fall, so to have music prepared and ready to go, we covered seventy-one different scenes of music. Granted, these are anywhere from thirty seconds to a minute and twenty seconds, they're not long, but we're working with students who are absolutely beginners, whose songs take fifteen seconds, so we have to figure out ways to do that, but what we do is by the end of the year, they have a pocketful of pieces and then we plug these emotions into the scenes and the emotions of their pieces, we plug those into the scenes, so it works best before or immediately after school gets out, as we have all just finished wrapping up recitals, as we have all just gotten all of our year's worth of music put together. So, thank you for the invitation. I don't mean to sound ungrateful, but it doesn't work that way.
Well, thank you for doing this. This is the kind of thing that word gets around about what a nice screen and a nice facility this is and maybe other things will be wanting to come down and have their some type of activity here in Glen Rock, that's really great.
Thank you. But do I have permission? The main thing is, do I have permission to use the town logo in the marketing? Is that something I need to seek or can I just go drag and drop, plop, and use the town logo?
I'll make a motion, or move to make a motion that we approve you using our logo for your music project.
I'll second it.
It moved and seconded, any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Hearing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And look for the very first Saturday in June to be the Silent Film Festival at the Glen Rock Town Square.
We missed it, we were in Cody.
You missed a really...
Any other items from the floor?
Hi, my name is Bill and I had a situation last week where I was called by an officer to remove my truck from the side of the road, even though it was licensed and had insurance. The problem was, it had a for-sale sign on it, so I was told I needed to move that within seventy-two hours. Well, in the process of trying to figure this all out, I actually ended up getting the ordinance that you folks have on this and if you want, I would read it to you if you want me to.
No.
Okay. So, the first officer said that the truck had been parked near a drain and of course, we had that big rain and that big rain apparently washed some debris up next to the drain and somebody had a difficult time moving it. But still, it's the idea that, I was told also, that if I did park it, even in front of my home with a for-sale sign on it, I could be ticketed for that. So, in the process of talking to different people, another officer told me that this particular ordinance probably came about when there was a car dealership that was in town that had been parking on the street and putting for-sale signs on the cars, and I'm not sure how long this has been, I mean, how many years has it been? I don't know, you know? But it's kinda disturbing that, I mean, I've only lived here eight years, but in the period of eight years, I've bought three brand-new vehicles and all the vehicles were over fifty thousand dollars, so when you start talking, the kind of money that I have paid into the town, actually, when I originally moved here from Wheatland, when I originally moved here from Wheatland, I went to Converse County and got my tags and everything changed over to this county, because I know the money stays within the county. And so, and I was just kinda roughly figuring, you know, that in the eight years that I've been here, I've probably put about six thousand dollars... I've, I've probably, uh, put about six thousand dollars into the school and into the town. And me putting that kind of money into the town and then I'm being penalized because I'm going to have a for-sale sign on my vehicle that has insurance and license plates on it. And, you know, and I'm kind of going off on a tangent here, but I'll, I'll just say something here, you know? How many people in this town have Casper license plates on them? That money doesn't come to the town.
We have no control of that.
No, but, but I understand you don't have any control over it, you know? But I'm just, I'm making a statement here that, you know, I'm, I'm doing my part to support my town. You know, and something that the town could possibly do to, um, make it so that, um, those people would be notified in such a way that you just kind of let them know, say, hey, you know, every time you buy your license plates in Casper, that money doesn't come to our school and it doesn't come to our town. Because it doesn't. Um, the fees that I pay, uh, approximately seventy-five percent of the money that I pay in fees for my license goes to the school. And approximately eighteen or nineteen percent of that comes to the town. And of course, the rest goes to, I believe, the state for roads and bridges. I, myself, think that this particular line F on your, on your parking thing, uh, should exclude people that pay their insurance and license and fees and those types of things. They should be able to sell and park their vehicle on the side of the street. Uh, for example, well, I know myself, I was counting up, I've, I've had, uh, six vehicles in the last eight years. And I, three of them are brand-new. So, I mean, what was I paying each and every time that I did that? You know, uh, well, approximate, it's been approximately.
I'm not going to try to cut you real short, but let's come to a point with this, Bill.
Well, the point is, I would like to see that amended in such a way that people could actually park their vehicle on the side of the street and put a for-sale sign on it without them being ticketed or penalized.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement and work on it in a short time.
I just think it's, it's, um, just not a fair thing. You know, I mean, for somebody like me who has done what I do, you know, I mean, I, when I moved from Platte County to Wheat here.
Most of us here all buy county thirteen plates, Bill.
What's that?
Most of us here buy all county thirteen plates.
Well, I, I know, I know, but there are, there are a great number of people in this town that do not buy county thirteen.
I understand, but like I said, we'll take it under advisement. You're, you're kicking a dead horse.
And, and, and one of the things, I mean, my suggestion would be that if you know the people that have, uh, county one license plates, if you could, if you, there's some way.
There's nothing other than statute for us to change that, Bill. So let's, you've got anything else to put out to our ordinance? Otherwise, I would like to move on with our meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying that you could actually get them information to tell them that, that.
That's personal choice by people in the other place.
I understand that.
Bill, did you, was your truck parked in front of your own house?
No, not at the time. No, I, a friend of mine on, uh, is it Fourth Street? Uh, you know, yeah, second, first, no, Fourth Street, is it Fourth, the one going out of town?
You can put it in front of the house.
Across from the library.
Five hundred block of Fourth Street.
Okay, all right. All right, well, please, you know, give the, give those people that are abiding by the law with reg, they have current registration, insurance and those types of things, they, they should be able to do that. All right.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council and everybody else. Um, we would like to know about the fire ban out there at South Rec for Hogfest. This is Mike Everhart, and everybody knows I'm Sharrick Kent. And, um, we'd like to know what it is, so that.
It's fire ban, Sharon.
The science.
Science, there's no fire, but there's no fire ban in the county or, we have ordinance about fires that we always control fire on property of the town, but there is no fire ban at this time. We just haven't taken the sign.
Well, you haven't taken the sign down and that's, well, we'd like to leave the sign up. Um, right?
Well, actually, the question I have is, what are the rules out at South Rec? They are allowed to have fires as long as it's in the ring or the barbecue pit?
In the barbecue, we're, you know.
Okay.
Approved fire pits are the, the barbecue pits that are out there, yes. We don't want to build and fire rings out through the grass or anything else.
I understand.
Yeah, bonfires is, is not good. Our police department's going to be out there along with our fire department. It's not going to be a fun time.
Well, that's exactly.
Might get a few mosquitoes, but.
Okay, now bleachers. The bleachers out there are.
Horrible.
Really in bad shape, and they have been for years.
We've, they've been rebuilt a couple of times.
Yeah, well.
Sir, the wood was taken out there and left there warped. They replaced like two inches.
It's been replaced several times, but it's pine, it's pine. It's not treated pine. It's going to warp.
I mean, they left it laying on the ground.
I don't.
Okay, well, and then, is there cameras out there?
Yes.
Good. Okay, that was basically everything that we had, right? Okay, I thank you for your time and your patience.
Well, we hope you have a good Hogfest this year.
Oh, we will.
Any other items from the floor this evening?
Yes, good afternoon. Um, a majority of the golf course board is here tonight, um, just to talk about the aid for funding that we've already, um, kind of put in for. Um, we had, we're trying to do some improvements to the clubhouse recently, within the last week, within the last week. Um, we have a structural problem with the clubhouse itself. Um, long and the short of it is, we did have a contractor come out and the railroad ties at the north side of the clubhouse have been there for years.
Since the debt was installed.
Yes. And the way the water sheds and the age of the, um, building itself and the way it was put in, um, the, those railroad ties are completely rotten and falling apart and they're disintegrating in their place. Um, so what that does with the watershed, with those that way, the railroad ties are rotten. The rimboard and the floor joists underneath that section are questionable. If not peel, you know, rotting, you can take the wood out of it. Um, we don't know about mold remediation or what's going to happen with that or what is there. But, um, we believe that the golf course is such an integral part of this community. We have people, and we talk about this when, when we come, and I, I know that you all understand it. We have people come from out of town just to come here to play golf because it's a very good experience. Um, they don't feel rushed. Uh, our prices are relatable and, um, in line with everybody else's. Um, they stay here, they have lunch, they fill up their gas tanks, they, um, come on a weekly basis. We have quite a handful of people who do that. Um, with the high school and junior high, we, you know, do things for them. We just had the most successful tournament for the high school basketball, boys and girls' basketball ever. And those coaches let it be known to us and to everybody there that this is our big fundraiser. And they made the most money that they had made in a fundraiser, um, Saturday. So, um, we welcome all of that opportunity. We have a golf pro who teaches the youngsters, you know, the etiquette and, um, the rules of golf. And they just thrive for that through the summer. So we're really, um, discouraged about the condition of the clubhouse and what's going to happen if nothing happens. Um, but so what we're here to do is to ask for, we had asked for the thirty thousand dollars, um, for our aid to funding. Um, we appreciate the fact that our new pump has been installed, is working fantastically, and the town had taken care of that for us. But, um, we're asking for the, we're asking for the thirty thousand um, because we don't know what's going to end up happening, uh, in the very near future because we have to have something done. And if we are going to tear that apart, we have to make sure that we have the funding to have it fixed right then. We can't just leave it halfway.
Kelly, was that the thirty thousand, came the thirty thousand we gave them with the pump, correct?
Minus the pump.
Minus the pump, the other balance.
Yes, ma'am.
Sheila, have you had any indication from any of your inspections that the building is in danger of being condemned for public use?
We haven't gotten that far because it is only, we've only known about it for a week. Um, but no.
I believe you've known about it longer than a week. You've had, you've known about it for quite, quite a few years.
We've known.
I've discussed it with Joe numerous times.
We've known that there is probably an issue, but we were going to do a little bit, um, of an upgrade. So we were going to take those ties out. When we started to take the ties out, I think there's two or three of them that we had a contractor come in and take out. That's when we noticed the immediate need for that because the, the water, it's just holding that and we don't know what's underneath there. There is, the section we're talking about, Margaret, is, from what I understand, all of the joists and all of this stuff run this way. This is the overhang. This is the part that's not had anything underneath it. So.
Are you considering having some, uh, further actual inspections up there to know exactly where you stand? And maybe after that, you can come back and visit with us again on what the very specific problems are that you're facing?
We, um, have talked as a group and then we haven't met as a board yet because our, we haven't had a meeting. It'll be next week. But we had talked about, um, you know, everything from a couple of different contractors coming out to remediation folks to, um, there's been a lot of conversation about how we want to start to do this. But we know that it's a big deal and we know that when we start it, we have to finish it. We can't just leave it.
Have you had Lyle up there to inspect your building?
Oh, we haven't even had a chance to talk to Lyle about it yet.
There he is, there he is.
That, that will be our, yeah, our next thing. But, um, we're just in the beginning phases of having an understanding of how huge of a problem it is.
I, I agree with Margaret. Maybe after an inspection and get some.
Some hardcore facts of what you're really, really up against the wall with. And then maybe we could readdress this issue and see what the possibilities are.
Is the floor joist out? Do you know that?
Well, the flo, the foundation, there's beams across there that holds the double-wide trailer above that. Instead of the original owner actually putting in soffit and a fascia and doing it correctly, decided to stand two railroad ties on edge to make a, a soffit or make a deal. You can kick a cat out about any corner, have been for years.
Yeah.
Instead of, they need to remove them and put a soffit in a, in a, in a tie-down from the trailer down to the top of the, uh, foundation, the basement.
And there's no visible drain hole where the drain, drain hole is supposed to be, where it drains out to the lowest point. There's no visible, so that water has not, um, been able to shed itself. So.
Well, it's shed somewhere because it doesn't go in the basement yet.
Well, and there's.
Not quite.
There's that section, that overhang section that's underneath where we're talking about. And that could be saturated, you know, five feet down, ten feet down is what we were told, um, or not. But some, I mean, there's been no visible water that we've seen after the snow, after the rain, after the melt. I'm sorry, Lyle, what? There are not gutters on this. Yeah.
It's a metal roof, though. We do have the furniture in place in case we get snow and stuff like that. But the gutters are on the only, as you know, there's.
Yes. Well, it looks like you have some work ahead of you to come up with some numbers and some figures and go from there is what, is what we're looking at.
Perfect. Okay.
So we'll invite you to come back when you have some numbers and.
Okay. Is there a timeframe? You want me to come next council meeting? I don't know what we can.
I don't know how long it's going to take you to get to that point.
How about when you guys have the information to present? Get us a good package and bring it in.
I'll shoot for a month. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, someone was also asking if anyone wants to buy a golf course, um, for the right price.
We've tried to give things away that you won't come take, so, for free. Is there any other items from the floor this evening? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business. First item of order is an ordinance appropriating money of the town of Glen Rock, Converse County, Wyoming, for the purpose of necessary to conduct the municipal government for fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. This is the third and final reading, passed and approved and adopted this date, twelfth day of June, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass ordinance seven forty-three, the budget ordinance on this, the third reading.
Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Did everybody look over the final numbers? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Our next order of business, I believe, is, our next one is ordinance number, let me find it, since I have paper today, is ordinance number seven forty-four. An ordinance amending amendment to water and sewer definitions pertaining to the term, term unit. An ordinance amending Glen Rock Town Code, Chapter twenty-six, Section twenty point zero nine point zero one zero and twenty-six point one three point zero two zero pertaining to the definition of units. I believe this is the second reading. Is there a motion?
I move we approve ordinance seven forty-four in second reading.
There is a second, so any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Next order of business is, business is an open container permit for Ashley Littleton for the two thousand three high school class reunion, uh, to be held, looks like on seven, eight of twenty-three, from three to ten P M. at the town square. They have filled out the application. She's been in and talked to Tammy and I believe has paid all the funding permits that she needs. Okay. Do you have anything you want to say? If you do, would you come up to the podium?
Um, I just wanted to say that we've attended a few community events at the town square and it's been so nice and so great to have a place to get together. Even for, uh, my sister did a five K run and we started there. They ran out, down around through town park and came back. And it really, it's so nice. She did her kid's birthday party there. And so getting to come back now and have this community area where we can get together and have our reunion. Um, and the open containers, just if we were to go up to Rosie's, have a margarita or something, you can still walk around and visit with people and, you know, it's not like we're going to try and throw a wrecker in the town square, just so if people, you know, out and about, walk around, meander, that they can have that open container.
So you are bringing more working across communities too, Glen Rock? So thank you for bringing Douglas up.
Okay, uh, is there a motion on this?
I move that we, uh, accept this permit, uh, as presented.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Uh, I just had a question, uh, under section two. It says that. I just had a question under section two, it says that an area designated for the consumption of alcohol must be clearly marked, and I know in the past, they've brought little handmade maps or something to show where they're going to and I was just wondering if-
I think the fact that they're going to use our facility right there, so it would be the town square area more likely, as far as I understand, because they're going to use the upstairs for part of the meeting room and that, so if they're out on the square, we could probably have the maintenance people set up the signs on the sidewalk that they can't go on beyond those points at the end of the sidewalks.
So not in the alley or the streetway or the parking lot or any of that?
Yep.
Okay. Would that area include if they walked to Rosie's and off that deck down to the town square, is that a-
You're close enough right there, we would-
Just make it quick.
Okay.
Yeah, make it quick, because your open containers for your people to bring alcohol with them and drink there at the square, that you're not selling it.
Okay.
It's really close, but that's a definition that you would have to speak to my chief of police about, so.
Okay.
But we're, you know, we're trying to make it work as best we can for you in the square area, so.
Okay, I'll, we can let everybody know that too on the page, so, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. There's been a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Next order of business is Resolution 2023-10, a resolution providing for and transfer of unencumbered and unexpended appropriations from the fiscal year 2223 budget, whereas it appears that it is necessary for the budget of the town of Glen Rock to be amended for the fiscal year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, taking into account certain unencumbered or unexpended funds. It is therefore hereby resolved by the governing body of the town of Glen Rock as follows. Section 1, General Fund Number 101.5101, Police Department, to include salary, tax, benefits, accounts increased by the sum of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents, for the source of which will be unappropriate surplus funds, transferred from the general fund and the 1% sales tax. So, passed and approved and adopted this date, 12th day of June 2023. Is there a motion?
I move that we read, pass Resolution 2023-10.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Was the figure wrong for last year for salaries?
I think it may have been a little bit short, but also with overtime this year being short-staffed and now we're basically full staff, which we have been-
For several years, yes.
So, it'll get us through, plus this is one of the few months of the year that we actually have three payrolls during the month, so that accelerated it a little bit.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Next order of business is the Mountain West franchise agreement, an ordinance concerning a franchise agreement with Rocky Mountain Technologies Incorporated. They are going to bring fiber optic to the south into town along the Deer Creek Road and set up another tower for their wireless system at this time. They're not coming any further into town at that. We had a meeting with them here, almost, not quite a month ago, them, our city attorneys and myself, and that was the, what, they want to be able to have a franchise agreement here, but that's the purpose of what they're doing right now, is to help be able to get some more people buy wireless at this time. Eventually, they may come in and try to do fiber optic installation, but like Vive has done, but I don't know, it would more than likely be pushed at that time to be underground as opposed to hanging on the poles, because they have to go into an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power to hang off the power poles.
Are they going up Markham Canyon, is that what you mean?
No, they're coming down the Deer Creek Road, they're coming off the fiber optic out by the, by the interstate and they will set up a tower right there off the end of the golf course. I believe they may be, I believe they might be on the edge of you guys' property, I don't know if they've had an agreement with you or not, but that's right in the area where their tower will go. Gives them a little more option for a few more people to be able to use it as internet service.
Is it one of all the stakes are for?
I'm not sure which stakes you're talking about, Bob.
They're along the, on the hole number eight, which is the south corner, there's stakes, I don't know if it's the last.
It probably has to be because we have many located, so it could have to be for that.
I have no idea.
Do you have any idea what direction it's going to be pointing?
They're going to try to cover another part of the town because right now, a lot of people can't pick them up for being pointed up the hill. Maybe the height of their tower and what they're going to set up out south there might-
Maybe they could point it down behind.
Might be able to give a few more people a little more options on the internet. That's their idea at this time.
Okay.
When do they plan to get this up and running?
They said they were going to work on it fairly, fairly soon, so once we got, once they got their franchise agreement, so hopefully it happens this year.
Were you going to read the ordinance for us?
No, you were supposed to read that several weeks ago and I'm not reading it unless you'd like to go to sleep.
We needed several weeks to read it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it takes a little bit to get there, so.
A minor question, is the word ordained really a word or is it ordained?
It's probably ordained.
Now therefore be a ordained.
Oh.
Oh, we're trying to gain some-
Well, I was like, I want to increase my vocabulary, so I'm wondering if I needed to learn a new word.
It's a new one.
It's a new one, Paula.
Okay.
This is, this was done by the lawyers, so your guess is as good as ours.
It could very well be a true word.
Yes, it could very much be.
I'll lend you my eleven pages if you want to read it.
So there's been a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries.
Nope.
I thought, oh, come on, shouldn't have any discussion. All right, is there a motion?
I move that-
You just had, what?
I move that we pass ordinance 745, the Mountain West franchise agreement, all eleven pages of it.
I'll second.
On first reading.
On first reading.
There's only one, I believe there's only one reading on it.
Yeah, that's the, that's the do of it.
For on a Fran, what, do we have three readings on it?
Yeah, we did for-
Rocky Mountain Power?
We did for Vive.
Did we? All right, I thought there only had to be one, but that's all right, then it's first reading, we'll have two more. Clear into the month of July. So, hearing no other discussion, I'll call for the vote again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Illegal.
Our next order of business is bills and claims, is there a motion?
I move that we pay our bills and claim.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned in my email when I sent these out, I do want to add Black Hills Energy in the amount of 1,064.48 and Rocky Mountain Power in the amount of 14,482.04, and the reason being, they were, didn't come out in time for me when I published to you guys and they will be overdue if we wait until the next meeting.
Amend your ordinance to cover those.
Yes, it sounds like a good idea, let's amend the ordinance to cover those.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded again. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Is there anything else to come before this council meeting this evening?
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I forgot to acknowledge is that Candy, with the Main Street people, sent to the council a very good monthly report and I very much appreciated getting this monthly report from her of what Main Street is doing for our town.
We should be getting one monthly.
It was a good report.
Okay.
Mayor, do we need to, do I need to tell them about the emergency water line repair we're going to do across the creek? I forgot to put that in my report.
You probably ought to say something about it now.
The high floodwaters, our whole line is uncovered right now and it's bowing and it's dumped wire, so we're going to-
And where is this?
Down in the park, right where it crosses the park.
You have a six inch waterman exposed in the creek.
Yeah, and it's bowing, so we're going to bore, have a boring company come in and drop six feet down and do some forty-fives, but in case you see the emergency funding coming in, that's what that's for, I'm trying to get SLIB to emergency that for us, so. I don't know if we'll get it, but I'm trying.
We'll be footing the bill and then seeing if we can't get some reimbursement from SLIB, but, yeah, you guys need to know that. I discussed that with Roy up at WAM, but we were talking about a few things, but yes, that's something that happened during the flood, so. If there's nothing else, I would, I need a motion to adjourn.
Pay our bills and claims?
I move we adjourn.
Well, you paid your bills.
We paid it, okay. Where was I? I'll second it, let's get this done.
I think we need to give everybody something that helps us with our minds. You have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Yes, I'm the second.
Okay, movement seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Stick around, let's sign the sheet for Kelly.